Day for the three people who are joining us online. We had some internet problems. Welcome everyone to tonight's select board meeting. Today's Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. I'm Sabrina Dunlap. We have Ken Trom, Stephen Whitley, Jeff Donahoe, and Thomas Lopoma will be hopefully joining us shortly. So first up, we have points of pride.
Sure. Last week, um, the audit was done and completed, and I really want to thank Kelly especially. It went shorter than usual, which is always a good sign. And thank you to Christine and Paula, who does the the rec stuff and the library with all their stuff. So it went very well, seemed to go great. And then really, believe it or not, we're in town meeting week from now until the twentieth. And really just starting in August, we begin preparing for this week and a half. And really, all the people that put effort in, the election prep, and Sarah and Christine and Emily, as they collect absentee ballots in there and everything that goes the highway. Group for setting up. And there's a lot that goes into this week. And I my favorite day used to be the day after town meeting, but now that we're at night, it's two days after. I'm too tired on the day after.
Since it's my last meeting here, uh, I certainly want to thank Neil in particular for everything he's done. And, you know, you so so helped me on budgets and all the financial things and and everything over my last twelve years. I won't go gushy about it. One of the points of pride is actually Neil had sent out a notice looking for volunteers as potential board members for the Hopkinton Food Pantry. And I had gone to it thinking, well, maybe nobody's going to show up, and I have some nonprofit experience. And a number of people did show up that had excellent experience in nonprofits and food pantries. So I I dropped out of that, but I just thought it really showed, you know, was a point of pride for the town that there were so many people that were willing to step up on that. And I guess I just want to uh, thank thank Rotary for the hosting the candidates forum that had a very good turnout and, you know, thank the candidates for them.
Yes, I was sorry to miss sex. I was traveling, but I heard it was well attended online and in person.
And it is available on the town website under town meeting, the recording of that if people want to watch it in the next twelve hours. Oh, well, actually twenty four hours because they don't polls close.
Um, so I guess this means this is Thomas's last meeting, too. Is that right? I didn't register this. Um, we'll 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 reserve.
The other one smiling the most.
We'll reserve further comment for a town meeting potentially, but um, yeah, I don't want to cry, so I'm not going to say too much. But I'm I'm really, really, really sad to not have you two on the board anymore. And Ken, it's scary because now I will be the longest tenured person. And we will miss your history and depth of knowledge and all your work on the budget and your sort of steady guiding hand. So thank you for everything you have done. And Thomas, thank you for taking on all of the difficult thorny things you've taken on in a short amount of time, including green bags. Six roads, which took us all on a real journey. Um, but yeah, there's more to be said. But I will just keep it short for me that you, I think the world of both of you, and um, I'm really going to miss you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I agree wholeheartedly with sentiments for for both Ken and Thomas. So yeah, thank you guys for your for your service. It's been a it's been a pleasure.
It's it's been, I'd say, my honor to serve on this board and serve the citizens of the town. And most of the time, it's been a pleasure.
I just want to make a motion now that we assign Ken's budget presentation to one of the new people. And then offices committees and all those.
All going to retract their like running for so we can do that. So let's hold off on that. Oh, okay. Lots of changes ahead. Um, all right. So next up, we have administrative. First is approval of the consent agenda.
For the final time, I'll move with your approval on the vendor of March ten, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
You want to let Thomas second that?
Um, maybe. No, no, no. Okay.
All right. All was in favor. Hi. Anyone opposed? All right, unanimous. Next up is approval of the public meeting minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
So move.
I do a resume.
Same.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, we have two non-publics uh, from February eighteenth. First is approval of the non-public meeting minutes from February eighteen, twenty twenty five, session one.
I'll move and note they are sealed.
Oh, were you there, though?
Yeah.
You were? Okay. I didn't think you were.
No.
Okay.
I still.
I think you still second. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, all right. All those in favor? Aye.
I'll say.
Extension. Anyone opposed? Okay. And approval of the non-public meeting minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, session two.
I'll move and note they are also sealed.
I'll second and note that I wasn't there.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Same.
Saying anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next up is our one and only public appointment moderator, Sarah Persino.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Thank you for being. I really hope you all know that the election is tomorrow. It's very exciting.
What?
Okay. So the polls are open for everyone in the audience. Polls are open from seven AM to seven PM at the Hopkinton Middle High School. I believe and hope you all have talked about staffing. If you can't be there for any parts of the day, just let me know, and we have to appoint pro temps for the constitution.
You know my sub.
I'm so grateful to have your sub in. Kathy is the best.
One whole day.
What? I'm not letting you get out of your last election, and don't think I'm not calling you back for other needs in the future. Um, I have enlisted the help of a second temporary assistant moderator because our assistant moderator, Jim O'Brien, has some scheduling conflicts. And the school moderator, James Newsom, has additional scheduling conflicts. It's very convenient. The House Election Law Committee is holding executive sessions tomorrow. So he will be busy at the State House. Um, so the pro tem assistant moderator during their outage will be Anna Wells, who is no longer a town employee, which is great. She was previously the assistant moderator before she took the town position. For town meeting, unless there's anything else on election day.
It's all set up, ready to go.
Thank you. And thanks to DPW. We will have munchkins and coffee. Thanks to Dunk. So thanks for that. Um, and it'll be beautiful weather, so. I'm so sorry to make you all stay inside. For town meeting, as a reminder, it is Thursday, March twentieth at six PM. Um, unfortunately, the Secretary of State's office has issued guidance to election officials to moderators this year that we cannot work with LHS to set up our poll pads to check in voters for town meeting. We were hoping to do that because it works so well for elections, and we thought it would speed up the process. I disagree with the Secretary of State's ruling on this, but they've been very clear. So we are working with our representative, James Newsom, on finding solutions for this legislatively so that it won't be an issue next year. But for this year, I do think it's important. When we're communicating with people about town meeting, that we emphasize there will be long lines again. They will be alphabetical lines, so plan to come earlier to check in. If you all show up at five fifty-five, we will have the same issue we had last year. The supervisors are going to open check in at five PM, so people can get there anytime between five and six to check in. I think that should work out pretty well. For the actual layout of the meeting, based on experiences last year, we are going to set up a table with the guardrails for secret ballot counting, so people can view that without obstructing the process. It is important, I think, for people to remember when they're viewing secret ballot counting process that they cannot be engaging with counters. It's very distracting. So if someone has a question or concern, just contact the assistant moderator or myself somehow to raise that. Um, it can get pretty confusing if you have folks trying to talk to you or tell you you missed something. Um, and that's not the role of observing. You can just be observing. There will be a minimum of four secret ballots on town meeting day because there are three bonds. Thank you all so much for that. And one SB two. So we are planning ways, because each box, each vote has to be open for an hour for the secret ballot. We're planning ways to do that semi concurrently so that we don't have four back to back one hour openings. I don't really relish the idea of being there until the wee hours of Friday morning. So we're going to work on signage. We'll make sure we're communicating very clearly. We've got the colors set up for your tag marks and for the yes, no ballots. We will do our best to be efficient and appreciate everyone's patience as we work through all of that. Any questions? Anything to add?
Sounds great.
Great. It's gonna be awesome.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah, so much fun.
What a per usual.
Per usual. Yeah. Everybody should bring knitting, Girl Scout cookies, and uh, we'll have fun. Okay, I'll see you tomorrow.
What time are you getting?
Me? Five forty-five.
Do you like your coffee?
I don't drink coffee. I appreciate it. Um, what time would be helpful for us all to be there tomorrow? If you can be there at like six thirty, six forty-five, that's great. You don't have to be sworn in or anything, but it's helpful to have folks set up. And I will be asking select board members at times there will be staffing gaps at the greeter table and potentially at the ballot table. So you're going to get fun jobs tomorrow. Just be ready for all the things. I know you have so much experience. And I promise I'll let you get fresh air outside a little bit, too.
Thank you.
Yes. And if anyone comes to the polls, has questions, um, just always come to myself or to Christine, who is the town clerk with those questions. We are navigating the new voter registration law, HP fifteen sixty-nine, which was signed into law last year and took effect after. So there are new requirements for registering to vote. Um, we have shared those on social media. The Secretary of State's office has put out um, guidance on that. I think it might be up on the website, too. Um, so just check that if you have to register to vote, especially if you are someone who was married and changed your name. You will need to bring a marriage certificate to verify your identity. So just make sure you go through those records so that we don't have to send you back home. And again, we didn't change the law. We're just enforcing it.
That's the state legislature that changed the law.
Yes. So check it out online. Make sure you have everything. You need to register, but if you have questions when you get to the polls, just reach out to me or Christine or the supervisors. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. See you bright and early.
Go to bed early tonight.
She won't sleep. Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so that rolls us into old business. Uh, first up is town meeting review and preparation.
Yeah, anything else you need to, I sent out a draft script. Sarah will probably adjust the beginning. She usually does for her stuff, which is which is good. So, um, and then each article.
Um, should we quickly just review who's doing what? Because I looked at my draft and I appear to have nothing, so.
Yeah, I read Thomas's name a lot as I was going through. I figured last last go.
But just quickly make sure we're all on the same page, and I'm happy to take something off someone's plate if needed. Um, but I have Jeff down for the three bonds, lagoon, wastewater, and wastewater. Are you okay with that, Jeff? Okay. Stephen, I have you for SB two.
Yep, that's good.
Ken, ten, operating budget, capital reserves, uh, expendable trust fund.
Yeah.
Thomas, we have you for Article ten, because it's pay by bag, but that's just the one, that's the one we do every year where it's appropriate. Would you like me to take that one?
I'm probably doing it because I write out, isn't that, do I just like go into a roll after that?
You do. Yeah. If you want to take these off. So the next one's also usually knock on wood easy. It's the senior center rental special revenue fund. And then this is where you get into perhaps something that might require a little more time, which is rescinding pay by bag.
Very excited about it.
And rental of the Bates building.
Yes.
Okay. Stephen, we have you as designating lots as town forest.
Um, okay.
And authorization to sell land.
Actually, I have.
Or is that me?
I have you for.
That explains it.
Designating town forests.
I put S and I got confused and thought it was for Stephen.
In this.
Article fourteen. And Article fifteen. And you have me.
And Article fifty.
Okay. And then, um, Thomas, for your grand finale, the petition war article, which do we normally? Yeah, we would.
Somebody speaks one.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yes.
So this is rescinding the select board's authority to accept.
So usually the petitioner will move it and speak and then then we'll immediately go to the.
Great.
All right. Do I can wrap it up with other legal business?
Who is SB two?
Stephen. All right.
But there's only fifteen articles, of course. Seventeen articles.
Should be done by dawn.
I should. This this meets the needs of everyone. We'll start on Thursday night and end on Saturday morning. So people liked it the old way.
That's right. Okay, that's great. Um, next, we have the Webster letter regarding the length of lagoon cleanup.
Yes, you briefly discussed this last time, and I just wanted to make sure if there's anything or if you just wanted to wait to have this a meeting with them at some point. This was their letter that they wanted a ten year length of um, the bond versus twenty. Now technically, you won't determine the bond for another two years until the construction's done, so.
I mean, I'm I'm open to meeting with them, but I mean, is there urgency on their side to meet with us?
I, no, not really.
Or and if we agree with them, we may not need to have a meeting at all.
Right.
So maybe wait and let's just assume it's, let's wait and see if it passes.
See what happens.
You know, when we have our new board, we talk.
Sounds good. Yeah, there there's no action items that we can do on that, right?
I don't think so.
No.
When when uh, I guess Jeff is talking about the uh, the bond that the business meetings. You know, I I assume you'd indicate it's right now twenty years with the possibility that Webster is interested in ten, but their financial projections for future years are based on twenty.
Right. And everything in the warrant and a tax impact is all based on twenty.
All right. Anything else on that? Okay, so finally, under old business, we have transfer station gate system.
Yeah, and that was in there. I think Jeff had gotten a proposal.
Yeah, so probably last spring, we started talking about the transfer station and access and stickers. And we did a couple of days there ticking people off and one of the things that was raised is could we get an RFID gate system where someone pulls up and um, the scanner reads their code and opens the gate for them. And so um, I chased that down with a company out of Dover, Granite State Gate Systems, and had them come out. Uh, Dan Blanchett was there for the meeting, as were the transportation staff. Uh, and the recommendation was to, if we're going to pursue a gate system, to put it sort of um, further down the driveway, the access road, just before where you can turn into the bottom of the um, hopper where they put in vehicles for collecting the trash. Uh, that is line of sight to the top of the building so that if uh, the staff needs to let somebody in remotely, they can do that. And, you know, I just wanted to bring it to the group uh, to see if we want to pursue it any further. And I know it would obviously require some input from Webster. It will be a new world order for the transfer station, uh, because it will be automatic. So nobody from Concord will be coming in unless they have a sticker somehow. Commercial haulers would have to have a sticker. You know, it's, it should cut down on people coming in who aren't authorized to come in. But again, it was there were some people really pushing it early on. We sort of didn't get there until I think it was just before Christmas that the guys finally came out and had the meeting with Dan and the team. And this is the result. Surprisingly inexpensive from what I expected it was going to be.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it's going to be, you know, seventy-five or a hundred grand. It's very certain, I think, is the number.
And that includes like putting in the gate and the little like things we'd have to give people to.
Comes with four, four thousand tags.
Oh.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Took a while. We'll get there to find her. You know, I went online and tried to contact some outside companies.
Yeah.
Got very little response or very little true answers. It's like they had a AI robot responding. But then I I happened to see a project. I was driving somewhere in the state and I saw Granite State Gate System. They're putting a gate in somewhere. I said, hey, I want to talk to you guys. So they were very responsive. Um, you know, they they sent us the proposal back in December and you know, they've checked in a few times, but I said, you know, we're just focusing on the stuff at the moment. Doesn't mean we're not interested, but um, you know, it would definitely be, I think, more secure.
What was the, what was the general feedback from Dan and the team at the transfer station?
You know, Dan uh, didn't have much of a problem with it. Uh, you know, he was involved in the discussion of where it would be cited, where the gate should be, and the line of sight ac- access is important um, for the operation of the gate and the communication with the staff in the office. Um, you know, I guess the the question that we really didn't get to is what if there's no one in the office and someone comes to the gate and they can't get in? You know, we have to do some way for people who aren't authorized to turn around and get back out. Um, that's why he thought having it further down, the the road's a little wider there, uh, so people could make a U-turn and get out.
Probably Jeff or Neil. Are we finding that there are people that should not be using this uh, transfer station or still using it?
Well, his, the the two days that we did the sticker checks, there were definitely people using it who were not authorized.
Yeah.
I don't think that much has changed in that regard. You know, I still see people without stickers, but there's definitely more people have stickers now than that first time dramatically more, I think.
I think it's also one of those things where if we're always checking, it will stop. And then if we stop checking, it'll come back.
Yeah.
So it's whether or not we have someone continually doing this or if we have a system that does it. And also, didn't we notice a pretty, in the following months after the stickers and the enforcement, we saw a pretty big reduction in hauling fees? Or is that, am I making that up?
I can't remember. I know we've seen a good increase in income because of the fee changes.
Okay.
Not, I'm not sure.
A lot more people came in to get stickers. I know we ran out of on on one of the occasions.
Yep.
And so did Webster, maybe on both occasions.
Yeah. Yeah, there are a lot more, a lot more cars with stickers.
The the other thing I think is definitely worth noting is there was a lot of people when we were doing the checks, there was a lot of people who showed up who didn't have stickers, who were extremely blithering. And there were people who even just ignored us and drove through and basically said, call the cops if you want to. And so it's something that's very, I mean, it's not, it's not easy to have a person do it, but a gate doesn't really care.
I think when Sabrina and I did, we did not, you can, you know, contradict me, but I don't think we had any belligerent people or very, very few.
We had a few people who were not happy with us.
Not happy.
We didn't get in a fight with them. We let them. That was the difference.
To be honest, I think the people who just said, screw you, call the cops, I think those were people from in town. I don't think they were Concord people.
Yeah.
I think they were residents of Hopkinton, Webster.
This, so would Webster share in the cost of this or just the entire? Okay, so.
At seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, okay. And and the other materials that are after this quote, are those just other alternatives that are that don't have the RFID capability?
Um, so so this is all RFID. You have to have a software program to run it, which I think has got a hundred and fifty dollar annual license fee.
You talking about the other pamphlets?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, I think those are pamphlets for the devices that are used in this. Oh, okay. I misunderstood. Yeah, I thought those were all part of the system. It's all part of the same. Okay, thanks. I mean, I would, I guess, suggest that once we have a new board and get past town meeting and elections, that maybe schedule a meeting with Webster.
Yeah, I mean, we'd want to schedule, I mean, notify people that you have to have a tick sticker. You're going to be locked out.
Yeah.
And, you know, some people still say they didn't get the message.
Yeah.
It's probably one of those things that would justify a townwide mailing.
Yeah.
Maybe maybe like a substantial period of break in, too. Like, we we talked before about handing stickers out with registrations.
Yeah, and I think the talk was that you would sit down with Webster again after we see what happens with the pay by bag, because that changes how it.
Yeah.
Because there are a variety of stickers out there that have been somewhere thirty years old and all the way up through.
My mine's at least fifteen, I think. I think I've had on four different pickup trucks.
I I'm generally, I think this price seems really reasonable. I think it, I'm generally in favor of something like this. I think it'll take workload off of the staff that's there that's already understaffed.
We record your opinion. It doesn't matter anymore.
Exactly.
My opinion that doesn't matter either is that I think it's a good idea if there's a need for it, and I think you'd want to.
Yeah.
And I I think the automated nature of it will help with some of those confrontations for people who just, you know, I'm not getting a sticker and you can't stop me.
Now you can't get in.
I know the chief did stop at least one of them.
And we we're charging five dollars a sticker right now, which would cover more than cover the cost of buying those.
All right. Well, thanks, Jeff. I I think it sounds like it's worth pursuing, too, after we get through town meeting.
Should we form a committee?
Will you be the head of it?
For tonight.
Okay. Um, all right. Anything else on that? All right. So moving on to new business, we have the Foster land purchase request.
So you have that in there. Actually, Mr. Foster's here. So it was a request to purchase the land. The corner that isn't directly across from um, Duncan's on the other side would be the east side. You do have a authority to sell it. I think you sold the one across, which had no access to actually Mr. Foster is the abutter. I think in this case, you would need to go through a if if you decide you want to sell that, it would have to be a sealed bid process because it it isn't in a, but it's not a unique situation. So I think you would have to do it that way. Um, I know at one.
Duncan dollars toward the dam. This is on the right.
Yes, it's that that piece doesn't go quite to the river, but down in that that area. You know, at one point, there was talk about using that to tie in if there was, if if there was development on the other side to tie into the trails and to the to Elm Brook.
Would it make sense to have the uh, the Conservation Commission or the Open Space Committee uh, have info?
You you generally do before you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Economic Development too. But yeah.
And one of my goals is to. Auction off a bunch of property, so you could do that at the same time. This would be slightly different because it's not tax-dated, but town meeting to give you authority to sell. All those pieces back when it was purchased, so this is a little unique, you don't have to go back to town meeting.
Okay, so should we start with uh checking in with the?
EDC and Conservation Commission? All right. Is that answer your? So um. They want to hear the opinions of the Conservation Commission and the Economic Development Committee and go from there.
I don't know what to do with it anyways, uh it's so restricted, you know, it's close to the railroad tracks and river. Uh it's just that I'm old and I spend money on land because I like. You know, my father was the road engineer in town, well, Hopkins never had any ground. And he thought that my that this was years ago, this is in the sixties. So he said, geez, I'd like to buy that piece of land with a state owned it. So we never got it, so here it is now, seventy-nine years old. Say, Dad, well, I got the land. So we made me buy my blocks next door in a person, Duncan Don'ts. So I thought, well, maybe you have pride, I maybe I can sell, uh my kids can have mobile on the run or somebody like that, you know. For gas station, a lot of the people who come down from to buy Duncan Don'ts from team, so there's not much. So I went just check, I love them in the grass, and I have to tell you the piece that I did buy from you people. It's cost me almost two hundred thousand in minutes in engineering, but I thank you so much, it's just, it's added on in my life, I just love. But anyways, most of those places went town water and they went town sewer. They don't want to be out in the middle of nowhere, those are two big things and where you're next to the river. Now, another thing, it isn't zoned for a house, it isn't zoned for duplex down on. But it's all for twelve apartments, which to me doesn't make a lot of sense. Personally, you can put one kid to school or two, but you got twelve families there. And it is zoned for a drive, uh not a drive-in restaurant, but a restaurant, you can see what the zoning is, it's kind of restricted. So again, I don't have a clue what I'm gonna do with it, and it's nice soil on a good road next to a river. And I think I'm doing something in my life, maybe I'm making my father happy, he spent.
And I applaud you for that. I hear kinda like you. Not well. One of the things Neil said that you may not have heard is that we would have to auction this property or do it, okay, I just want to be sure.
You know, was assessed a couple of years ago for ready, then it went up to a hundred and twenty-five. And I had made an offer one fifty, I sold my house, I got a few dollars, but I'm not, I'm living in my garage. I'm not gonna build another house, uh so.
Is that in Hopkins or Hennecker?
What's that?
That you're living in the garage?
In Hennecker.
Okay.
I thought it was zoned, I can't get access to it, but I hired an engineer, said I think we can squeak one in, and I didn't think we could. I never heard that, I think years I've been alive, but then uh. Hopkins wouldn't give me a driveway permit, I had to go to Hennecker just to see anybody, I did get a driveway permit, but it had to be narrow and it had to be pointed to my debt. But it's okay, it's all good, and yeah, I heard what he said.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that.
Understand that, I didn't know what's sitting there.
Right.
And I didn't know what you guys wanted to do, so.
If you don't ask, you don't know.
That's all.
Yep.
You know, if I get it, it'd be wonderful if I don't. I buy something every day and I don't need anything and I still do, so it's all good. Yeah.
Very good.
So that's all, I just wanted to say that, thank you, so am I gonna hear anything from you or this or is that? It's gotta go, there's a committee.
Yeah, we'll ask them and then put it on the next board agenda to report back.
Government works very slow, they don't like, so it's okay. So I just came to add any questions, that's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
I know I talk loud, I hear it from women all the time.
It's helpful that we can, we can hear.
They can't hear me. Thank you very much.
Hi, so we'll check in with the committees and go from there.
Go from there, I'll. Find out from them and. If they meet before your next meeting. Oh, which, no.
I don't want to move on to the next agenda item. Uh under new business, next up, town administrator transition.
So you have in your packet, this was not a fun packet to put together either. So I reached out to MRI, which who does recruitment. And I also asked them about potential interims, they have no interims, they are.
Oh.
Out, there are, there are numerous towns open.
Are these the ones in this list all open?
So if they, those are ones, they aren't. Let's see, Ashland is open, New London is open, Deering is open, Swansea is open. I'm not sure about Farmington, Newton, Somersworth.
I think Amherst just got a new one.
I think Amherst that had closed, Meredith. Had another closing and Wyndham is not open anymore. Wyndham is the reason Swansea is open, so um. But I thought I'd list what was in their ads there, uh so. There's no interim, my sense is to go with an in-house process, which I provided. Were you where, where basically there's an updated job description. If you had any changes, uh we would advertise it and then have a um. Initial committee to do the interviews, um including department head, you would choose which one, we could discuss that more. I have to say, when I first interviewed, I it was good to be interviewed by the department heads. Um to show that everybody's kind of on the same page. That if we do this right away and post it, it could be an April tenth deadline for submission. And then the review committee reviews it and then interviews the week of April twenty-first through twenty-fifth. And then you would get two to three candidates on April twenty-eighth. And then interviews could be set up there and potentially choose a candidate by May twelfth. Which hopefully, if it's a month, it could be June twelfth. Hopefully before July, it's a, it's an aggressive. It's an aggressive timeframe, but I think that probably makes the most sense. I've talked to Beverly and she is willing to put in more hours to pick up some of the areas and I think Kelly is also that I think we can. The good thing is, it's a slow time of year. Relatively speaking, not as slow as it used to be.
A a question, Neil, with the initial review committee and in other towns where they do this, do they have any citizens on that initial committee?
I don't, not necessarily. Um I actually sat, as you know, I sat on the Warner one with department heads and. I came in as sort of an outside.
Yeah.
Person who. They have an idea of what a person should be doing, so. But ultimately, it comes down to the board making a decision.
And you don't need to answer this specifically, but in general, are you aware of any? Town administrators that you might recommend?
Don't know, cause it hasn't really, I haven't had that conversation yet.
Okay.
Not sort of knowing where it's going, but if you decide to go in-house, I certainly. Would have some conversations with people who might be very good possibilities. I would say. Most of the town administrators know that this is a good place to be. Just the people that at least that have been involved in our monthly lunches. I I probably have a list of people, you probably, that wouldn't be good matches.
Just as important, so.
Is there any chance of you staying a little bit longer, I just. I'm very worried about like trying to, first of all, we'll be lucky if we get someone anytime in this timeframe, second of all. I just don't know how we transition someone without you.
Um I'm certainly happy to answer questions and I'm gonna spend the next eight weeks putting as much as I can. In writing and getting it organized and sort of farming it out. So that people can help with that transition. I have. Scheduled, I have three weeks in between. I have to say, I need three weeks, and in the middle of that is my daughter's graduation, so I'll be traveling, so. But I'm. Always available via phone.
Of hope that there's not even interims available, that just feels like a thing of nightmares.
Yeah, and it's possible. We could start the process and if it seems like it's not going to go as quickly as you would like. There may be interims that become available as other positions fill. There just happens to be quite a few positions.
My my sense of the town administrator sort of market is that it's an ever-evolving one. And so just because right the second there aren't interims, doesn't mean that'll be the case. And I I think that the internal process is probably the quicker way.
Yeah.
To do this than to do MRI and we don't have to pay MRI.
Yeah.
To do it.
Okay. Yeah, this makes a lot of sense, Neil, thank you for putting this together. So does anyone disagree with trying to do an in-house approach?
So little better.
Yeah.
If they come on earlier, that.
That would be appreciated.
You know, you have the. A draft, the job description hadn't been updated since two thousand eight, so it seemed like it was probably time to do that. So you have a draft updated and what I largely did is took what we had. But took a lot of the other towns who had just updated theirs and used them and begged, borrowed and steals. As we all do. It's always interesting when you get things from a bunch of different towns and you read something and go, that is exactly the same.
Is the expectation, and this is later in the agenda, but is the expectation that whomever we hire would also be the new health officer?
I don't think, I think the town administrator should not be the health officer.
Okay. See that in the right.
Yeah, I specifically left that out, I just think that's a. It probably would be wise to make a, maybe make a stipend position. And get somebody who could be the health officer, it's a, it's a weird position, sometimes there's nothing and then sometimes. There could be a lot, um and it seems like anytime there's a lot, it's probably budget season and then.
Would Chief Yale or somebody in his department be qualified to do that?
Um sometimes one of the firefighters takes that. They do do. Often like if there's a somebody who's going to adopt or be a foster parent. There would be a health inspection and a fire inspection and sometimes that's combined. I don't think the current building inspector is interested, sometimes the building inspector is the health officer.
One of the things that I I'd say you've spoiled the town on is because you're involved in so many other things in town. Other than strictly town administrator, and I'm wondering if that could somehow be captured. In the job spec for a future individual.
Well, I feel like. Just from like an employment perspective, um I mean Neil does do so much, but I'm not sure that it's necessarily appropriate to put that in. I mean, it's not like you being part of like Rotary is not part of your technical job description.
And that's a choice.
Yeah, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Ken, but I do think I also don't want to like scare potential candidates away by being like. By putting too much in here.
I was a few years in before I joined Rotary.
During an interview process.
And I wasn't thinking that was a requirement, but I was thinking like uh opening the town hall. With a candidate's forum and and running the Zoom.
But I don't think that's a requirement and you may not necessarily, that's. That's not really part of the job, that's kind of more of my sense of what community service is. As a member of Rotary to come and do that, that I do as a volunteer, not. I happen to have keys because of my position, but I wasn't here because of my position. That makes sense.
You weren't too hat.
Yes. Well, and I don't think it's fair to have. If you tell someone they have to do that. The job description tried to capture sort of the basics.
I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah.
I was pretty happy how it came out.
All right, well, so if we're good with that, can we, we need to um.
If you want to vote on that and adopt that.
And get it posted.
And move that we accept and adopt the town administrator job description. And and post it tomorrow.
Second.
All is in favor, aye? It's unanimous.
As far as posting, I listed the salaries that they that have been in what's gone out. Um and currently our range is ninety-five eight to one thirty-four. I don't know if you want me to post in that range. Be up to.
Where's that range come from?
These are, that range was done two years ago, it's it's our salary scale.
Okay.
But as you can see other towns, for example, Meredith advertised twice and they upped their salary the second time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the issue with each, all these towns maybe except Swansea is. The tax base.
That is true.
You know, we're predominantly residential.
And they are bigger, some of them. I just want to make sure that that's where.
New London grows to sixteen thousand?
That's what their ad says.
Cause I would say they're sort of, I mean, they're sort of comparable. Amherst is a little bit bigger.
And Swansea's a little bigger, but in Cheshire County, which is pays a little less, I would say.
What if we said ninety-five to one forty?
Can we go above the established range now?
Yep, you can.
Did we go?
Do it up to one forty?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we should.
Do we need to motion that or?
Do you need an official?
I I think if that's consensus, I can publish it that way, cause you'll you'll vote on the final.
Um does the job description? So how do you go about like, is there like a town administrator like place to put this or?
I can't tell you that, it's a secret. So the first place that we will get posted is on NHMA's website. Um we'll probably run it in the monitor to catch. Uh we don't always do that, but I think we probably should in this case. Those are the, those are the big places, unless you know of others. Places unless you know of others.
EEA do postings?
And we want them either of the union leader given circulation.
Oh, that's a good point.
Maybe can we do both? Just because the monitor is.
I think we can.
Then you get Manchester.
To get a pick up in that direction. That's a good idea.
Portsmouth two.
Seacoast.
Either Foster's in Dover or Portsmouth Herald.
Or in that direction.
He's way to do it on the seacoast online website.
And some of them, I think the union leader, it goes into an online thing too.
Um, yeah, maybe we should try to. Get the seacoast too. I mean, I can't imagine. It's cost prohibitive in those papers, right?
About a thousand bucks.
There's one typo. The, uh. It says. Physical and there's a missing H in the, on the last page. Physical exertion. And then will it, I, will we include the comp range and put like also includes X, Y, Z benefits?
Yeah. Right, sort of a, there'll be a link to the actual job description, but there'll be a write-up.
Okay.
Um, and this is essentially located next to the capital city and, um, it's, it's.
Awesome.
It's, um, what, forty-five minutes to the seacoast, an hour to the mountains.
It is a great location.
So.
All right, um.
House coming to sale right next to the town hall. True story.
There's one across the street too.
So.
That's really why I had to leave. It's the movie.
Was this, so let's see, health officer TBD.
Yeah, I'll. Coming next time with something. For that, um, and then I did put a. Portion of a press release, started a press release, which I think you all have. I'm not sure I have. But sort of one and. I just copied this from another town. I thought what the, their outgoing town administrator said was good, so I just.
Do we need to come up with a quote at this moment?
You could. You could. Do it tomorrow and send it. But it'd probably be good to get it out.
Yeah.
This week, especially if we're gonna advertise the position, it'd be just as good to be ahead of that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with you.
Piping up the quote.
Yeah.
So I can weep in my. I do better when I can actually type. I write better that way. Um, well, I'm, I'm happy to put something together and then. Do you all? Trust me with a quote.
It's your quote.
All right, I will come up with something and send it over to you, Neil.
Okay, that sounds good. I will just post it and although news travels fast, so it's kind of out there anyways.
Hi. Um, so wait, transition coverage, is that what you mentioned before that Beverly said she's willing to do?
Yeah, we'll talk, I think if we're doing it in-house, we'll, we'll. Talk and come in with a little more. Um, I know Dan. He had some surgery, but he'll be back and we'll come up to speed on like the lagoons and all of that. Although that's largely done by the engineers, uh, like a list of all those types of things.
And then remaining priorities?
I'll work on that list. Or if you have, if you have any specific ones, um, I have some things I really want to get wrapped up. So.
Okay.
I didn't bring it up, uh, when Mr. Foster was here, but what's happening with Horseshoe Tavern?
Uh, we're gonna, there's no interest in anyone taking it, so we'll. Will proceed as originally. Scribed, so, so we just have to have the asbestos abatement completed. And that's a matter of getting the company that does the abatement and the tester there at the same time. That's, that's one of the things on my list.
All right. Well. This is not a journey I want to be on, but.
It was, it was, it was a hard decision. It sort of fell in my lap, but.
Like a really good opportunity.
Yeah, I, I.
Is it closer commute for you?
It's, um, less than six miles from my house. My weekly commute will be about what my daily commute is now, so, and I've enjoyed that. That's been a good sort of.
Minutes for you right now?
It's thirty-four, thirty-five or forty.
That's real.
And it will be ten.
And far fewer night meetings, I'm sure.
Maybe. But I'm also behind the scenes much more, and I think I'm ready to be a little bit for a while at least behind the scenes. So. Um, so even if I'm at meetings, it's not. It's not quite the same.
Yeah. All right. Well, do you have any updates for us?
Let's see. Yes, uh, town meetings. So we've been focused on that. Ken mentioned the food pantry. Um, we're working on transitioning that as people. Leave, we'll see where that goes. Um, I was also very impressed with the people. We had. Over twenty people come to this initial meeting, um, people with lots of talents. We divided. The group into, really the town has nothing to do with the food pantry, other than they're in. The Slasher Center and. Um, it's the human services clients, um, but we, it's really a vital. Part of the town and we really need to keep it going. So, uh, we divided into two groups called one, the executive, which is working on sort of the structure and. Making sure that's all set and then an operations group that's looking at that. We also had some. A number of people who want to be volunteers at the food pantry, so, um, I think. I think it will move on strong. I think it's gonna be a bumpy. Getting organized time and, um. We're hoping this week to have a meeting with the people who are doing the executive stuff with the previous board. And we're hoping for a good transition.
And I thought it was also interesting that. There's a waiting list for volunteers. We have so many volunteers.
Hi. Anything else?
I think that is it.
Can you be around tomorrow? I can't remember.
Uh, I'll be, I'll be there some. Certainly first thing in the morning and then here, I think I'll probably be back for cleanup. So that everything's set for the morning, because I have to be at Rotary early, so.
And sleepover.
That's right. But don't put that in the job description.
You better get the transition team ready for the flag project.
That's.
Some treasures very worried about that.
Yeah, yes, well, we will get through. I'll be here through the first flag put up. Not here, but that doesn't go in the job description either. That's a Rotary, isn't it?
Okay, well, thank you, Neil. Um, all right, that brings us to public forum. If anyone online wishes to speak, you can raise your hand or anyone who has joined us in person. Now's your, your chance.
Norm Goofle one-two-one Ames Road. Don't like the news, but it's okay. Um, so I wanted to, I wanted to come by, um, because. I have some my calendar for a while. This was Ken and Thomas's last meeting and if you know me as a person, I always want to show gratitude to. The people who did this town fantastic and I had the opportunity to be on the budget committee with both of you. I got to know you well. I got to work with you. I got an opportunity to learn from you and become better at what I needed to do as a board member. And I feel that, um, there's none of gratitude. And I hope you guys realize you made an impact on Hopkinton. And for me, as someone who's been in the town for about nineteen years, I have to say, um. You definitely left a staple on this town, both of you, and you will be here for a long time, hopefully. Um, I'm just really appreciative of everything you guys did and I just really wanted to come out and thank you. Um, Thomas, we will be using your driveway on Gould Hill for cross-country running, because it's. Yes, yeah. We talked to someone, yeah, I want to make a motion. No, no, it's perfect. You're welcome to join us, um, up the hill, anytime, but no, I'll still, I'll still see you guys around. Um, and you know, everybody has a, a journey in their life where things come to an end and it's nice to be on the other side and. Um, show appreciation for the people who will be on here and it's definitely gonna be a new feel with two new board members. But I just really wanted to say thank you to both. I really, really have valued our friendship and the relationship, um, working together and I hope you guys really. Really know that. And then with you, Neil, um, I was saddened to hear your news, but I'm also very, um, happy that. You found something that's pretty close to home, um, and I have always gotten an answer, um, your attention when I had a question. I loved it when you corrected me. You're like, that's actually not true. And it was great because you knew the RSA is better than anyone else. Um, when we were at any need in and this town is forever indebted for what you've done. Um, I don't think the job description is correct. It's probably fifty pages of what you do for this town. And I honestly, uh, want to say thank you. I'm hoping I can come for your last meeting. I'm. I'm really busy the next couple of months traveling, but, um, I really want to say thank you for what you've done for the town of Hopkinton and, uh. Really guide the friendship, so. Thank you guys so much, okay?
Right back at you. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you guys.
Budget and all that. See Alyssa's hands up? Hi Alyssa.
Hello, hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. I just wanted to pop on and say like, Neil. Oh, I'm so excited for you and I'm so sad. Any farmers markets this summer and now I feel like I have to come to your town's farmer's market just so I have an excuse for you. Um, because you are a gem of a human and anywhere that you spend time is worth being. So congrats on your next adventure, um. I did have one question for everyone else logistically. With Neil transitioning and with applications hopefully coming in, where are they going and who's in charge of managing that communication? With any potential candidates?
So on the sheet, it has them coming to finance and human resource director Kelly Henley. Um, and I'll help where needed, but they will come into her.
Fantastic. And I just ask because those materials are online and one of the big things that can lose potential candidates when you're working with. Um, a C-suite or VP role and I, I think of a town administrator roles that way is that. Not an immediate and warm follow-up to confirm that things have been received and let them know about the timeline we are moving on. Particularly if you're posting this week, but there isn't a committee in place yet and therefore they don't know when interviews are going to be yet. That's all. Just thinking about how to make sure that if any fish do swim the way of the town of Hopkinton, that you don't lose them in the interim while putting the committee together.
All right, thanks Alyssa.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? Anyone else in person?
I'll be here for three more meetings.
No, that does not seem, I mean, I really truly lost track that this was your last meeting.
I just have a quick question of the lagoons. Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
So I think one of the, I'm watching one of the members, oh, sorry, Tricia Lambert, three oh five Galloping Hill Road. One of the members, when they were, um, doing meet the candidates had mentioned about frozen funds and we talked about it, I think, one of the last meetings. Where is that at? Is it frozen? In any way delayed for the lagoons?
They have told us no, but we will confirm that at the beginning of next week as we go in just to make sure, but. These funds are coming from somewhere else, so.
But I think they're still federal.
They're, um, well, they're coming from the, um, the clean water revolving.
Revolving loan fund, right.
So some money is coming back from other communities and some going out and. So that money's there.
I'm familiar with loan, but they get fed with different funds, so I just wasn't sure. So I know you had mentioned it just to clarify, so say like you find out, when, when are you meeting again? I'm sorry, what, when are you gonna find out?
So we'll confirm one more time before town meeting on the twentieth.
Okay, so you'll tell the town, I guess, if they're frozen. I think that's only fair, like, because you're, I know you're only, you're trying to vote on that item. You're trying to vote on that item to see whether that's what people want to do, but. If the rules change along the way, that would be not really fair, so, okay, I appreciate, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll close public comment. Thank you guys for being with us in person. And, uh, thank you everyone who joined us online. I hope everyone makes it up to vote tomorrow. And, uh, does anyone have anything else for other?
Ken doesn't have another? It's your last chance.
You can come as a member of the public. Uh, okay, so we do have two non-publics and, um, afterwards we will not conduct any other business. We will adjourn. So, um, thank you everyone who joined us and I will move that we go into non-public. Under ninety-one, eight-three-two E and also ninety-one, eight-three-two A, legal and personnel.
I'll second.
All right, it's a roll call vote, Steven.
Yes.
And, I mean, yes, Thomas.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.